All right, welcome everyone. I would like to call the March 16th, 2022 Regular March Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Board to order. May I have a roll call?
Yes. Figueroa?
Here.
Haye?
Here.
Jallowig?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Rizinski?
Here.
Rego?
Here.
Tingpapong?
Here. And we have a quorum. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Legits.
The Pledge of Legits. To the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, please read our offensive mission, beliefs, and bison way statements.
Our mission statement: To cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our belief statements: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with the state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectation to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. Mary, do we have a request for public comments?
No public comments this evening.
Okay, thank you. Let's go with two recognitions. Sam?
Good evening. We'd like to get the ball rolling tonight with Dylan Thompson. Thank you, Mr. Cambic. Mr. Cambic, that was his idea. Thank you. Okay, so anyway, Dylan, we're here to celebrate him as a junior this year. He qualified for the IHSA State Finals in late January. And just to give you some perspective, in the sectional, 267 pins in one of his games. And we know 300 is a perfect game, so very impressive. Like to congratulate his family who's also here tonight, his sister, also a bowler, two points, two pins away from qualifying, so we hope next year to have both of the Thompsons up here. I hear bowling's quite, quite the thing in the family, so thanks for supporting him tonight. For a little more information, we're gonna have Coach Lynch. We'd like to thank Coach Lynch and Coach Chappell for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, thank you for having us this evening. This bowling season was a, was a tad bit a little difficult here because with all the COVID guidelines and the different, everything that had to go on and, and things, us moving things round and round, you know, it was tough at the beginning not knowing what was gonna happen and how we're gonna bowl and where we're gonna bowl and all of that. And so, the season started off a little slow, but a testament to not only Dylan but the other young men that's on the bowling team, they stuck with it and we stayed in there. On the season, Dylan's season average, and, and when you look at the season average and you look at how everything progressed, you will see how, how the season went and why Dylan deserves what he got. His season average was 177. However, when we got to the regional, the regional average was 213. Now, when I tell you that, we were in the second toughest regional in the state of Illinois, and, and he averaged 213. And the sectional average was 224.5 as we went on. And then as we got downstate in the semifinal round, his average was 202.5. And those averages downstate, they come crashing down because of the atmosphere and everything air. So as you see, because of the way the season started and as it progressed, and things got comfortable when we got into it, Dylan kept rolling on. Now Dylan is, is the second bowler since 2014 at Fenton High School to qualify for state. And that's two bowlers in the last 12 years, and he did a fantastic job. Now, I can sit here and talk about Dylan all night here, but really, this night is about Dylan, so I wanna introduce Dylan and give him an opportunity to speak. So ladies and gentlemen, Dylan Thompson.
I really wanna thank my, my family, my coaches, for the opportunity to go into state. It was a tough one this year, but next year, we're going for state champ.
Yes, yes.
We're gonna take a picture real quick if the family wants to step up?
Yep.
Come on, folks.
More announcements.
Okay, next up, our speech team. Come on forward. Pleased to announce that the Fenton Speech Team was sixth in the state this year. And not only that, but there's one big class who are competing against schools much bigger than Fenton, so an amazing accomplishment for everyone here, so congratulations. We're gonna highlight everyone here tonight, but we're gonna start out with our two students that brought home state championships. First is Carissa Lara. As she defended her 2021 state championship, she won first place this year in informative speaking and actually her third state title in two years. And she also won sixth place in poetry reading, just to, just for, there we go. We also want to highlight Evelyn Perez, who won first place in state this year in special occasion speaking. We were able to celebrate these accomplishments at the school-wide assembly on March the 3rd, in which they performed their state-winning speeches, which was outstanding, flawless. That's how I felt. But anyway, it was a great example of what can happen if you put your mind to it, take the instruction that's given to you, and dream big. And I think that's a great message for all of our kids to see, so we are more than happy to have those assemblies. We'd also like to highlight Carolina Rosas, who won third place in humorous interpretation. Sochi Quinones, qualifying competed in radio speaking and original oratory events. And finally, the performance in the round, the day the Crans came home. That's right. And you're kind of in the, right? Because on stage, they did surround the audience, so we're kinda trying to do that here, right? Okay, I'm just gonna announce your names, just to highlight your, your state performance. Aldo Benitez, Alexa Calderon, Soli Colas, Zuiji Marendez Garcia, Leila Morales, Dylan Orlick, Angelina Munoz Meredia, Tara Pabico, Phoebe Reyes, Morgan Titella, and Julia Windham. Congratulations. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Coach Hendricks, Coach Feinberg, and Malyo Connor, but before we do that, I, I must say, seven state championships in four years does not happen by accident. So I think we need a big round of applause for our coaches.
Just gonna soak that up for a little bit. Thank you for saying all of the names, too. We are so, so very proud of this team. This is the most that we've advanced in speech individual events and performance in the round in quite a long time. So 15 students attending speech down in Peoria, just at the end of February. And one of the things that we always work with our students to understand is that our sectional, like you heard Mr. Lynch say, too, our sectional for speech is one of the hardest in the state, there are six. And from our sectional at state, seven of the 14 individual events champions were from our sectional. So they were representative. So they really, we compete with the best, and, you know, just because we're a small school, that doesn't get in our way at all. We like to compete with the best at our regular tournaments, too. So we're so very proud of these students. Many of our students, as you know, through the pandemic, have faced individual difficulties as well, some with health issues, some, you know, and they kept going. And one of the things that they always have is this persistence and desire to continue to lead. And then one of the other things that I see, too, is that they continually support students from other teams. And that's a kind of a culture that we like to cultivate, because they often go off to college and make friends with those students around them, too. For Carissa Lara, who is coached by myself and Ms. Feinberg, in her events this year and her previous years, we're absolutely proud of her and the young speaker that she's become. She's polished more so than, at this point, I think I am. I'm out of practice, she's definitely in practice. And she knows how to not only organize a strong poetry program with a common theme, but then also to organize an informative on the topic of tea. If there's anything you'd like to know about tea, Carissa Lara can spill the tea for you. She's got that going for her. And so, to have those three titles, as well as to play sixth in state in poetry, I mean, there's just, I don't know how you could do any more, anything more than Carissa Lara. So I'd like to take a moment, step aside, and let Carissa speak, and then, and then discuss Evelyn a little bit, if that's okay.
Hi, um, thank you. I think I owe a lot of my success to my coaches over here, and they're the ones who like continuously push me to, to work my hardest, because they know everything that I can do. And them and my parents, they're the ones who always teach me to work the hardest. So yeah, thank you.
Moving on to Evelyn Perez, another senior, we are going to miss leaving this year, but then also just enjoy that she's gonna move on to the next chapter of her life as well. Evelyn Perez taking first in special occasion speaking. Evelyn has always brought a wonderful sense of humor to the acting events. You've probably seen her in shows here, as well as in choir, as involved as Carissa is, too. And she's always been, we've had her in many, many events over the years, but she really found her home in special occasion speaking, where we shape a message for a specific audience. And this year, she shared a message on structural gaslighting, and actually shared it for an audience that was her family, as well as how we can sometimes do these things within our own family structures and how we must fight against them. And she provides some, some examples for us, too. And peppering it in with a little humor. So when we got to see that at the awards assembly, it was lovely, because we actually got to hear a much larger audience laugh and enjoy with her, and maybe be a little surprised that she was related to her friend Erica. We like to throw in names from our community as well, even if it's not the case. But Evelyn was coached by Melissa Feinberg in special occasion speaking. So proud of these, not only the competitors, but the coach as well. They just have such a great relationship, so I'd like to turn it over to Evelyn, so that she can, oh, and both of them have been four-year members, I forgot to mention that. Here is Evelyn to say a few words as well.
Hi, well, first, I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity and recognition. And then kind of going off of what Carissa said, I'd like to thank my amazing coaches for pushing me so far and encouraging me to try my best always, as well as my team members, my family, my friends, and anybody else who's supported me along the way. It's been an amazing four years, and I can't wait to see what this speech team will accomplish in the future.
Gonna take a picture?
Would be easier back there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, that's a good idea. Why don't we come back here?
Is the lighting good?
You could go behind. It's taped.
Okay, that was fun. So next, we normally go to informational items, but this evening, we're gonna go to our discussion items and action items. So we are gonna vote on this tonight. So we have a resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing school building bonds to the voters of the district at June 28th, 2022 general primary election. The next agenda item for the board is consideration of a resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing school building bonds to the voters of the district at the general primary election to be held this coming June 28th, 2022. The resolution sets forth the following proposition to be submitted to the voters of this district. Shall the Board of Education of Fenton Community High School District Number 100, DuPage County, Illinois, improve the site and renovate, alter, repair, and equip the Fenton, bless you, Fenton High School building, including installing school safety and emergency response systems and equipment, repairing and replacing ventilation, plumbing, and electrical infrastructure, increasing classroom capacity, improving classroom lighting and technology, renovating programming and career learning spaces, mitigating indoor flooding with drainage improvements, increasing accessibility with Americans with Disabilities Act, compliance measures, and issue bonds of said school district to the amount of 129.7 million for the purpose of paying the cost thereof. Let me repeat that, it's 129,700,000. May I have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please, Mary?
Rego?
Yes.
I'm sorry, one moment, please. Is there any board discussions after this motion moved to second? So is there any discussions along the way here? Yeah, yeah, yeah. My apologies, sir.
This has been discussed for the public's purposes.
Yeah, for the public's purpose.
It's been discussed at length for the past hour, so.
I, I just wanna cut that off and, and do that.
Sure. I would recommend to the co-chair of the Finance Committee, possibly, and that's, that's you, John, and Carrie, to summarize what took place at the Finance Committee meeting. If you feel comfortable, I can take a shot at it.
Absolutely. We, this has been being reviewed and discussed, starting with our school survey for almost two years now, if I'm not mistaken. We've had all our public meetings, we, we've gone out and heard what the public had to say, we've had multiple committee meetings, we've had the Finance Committee meetings, we had a presentation that went a full hour prior to this meeting. If you really wanna be excited, you can watch that, you know, I'm sure it's somewhere out there on the web. But in not making light of this, it's very important. We've been trying to do our due diligence, we've been trying to be visible, we've been trying to listen to what the voters, what the taxpayers, what the students, what the staff all had to say about what needed to be done at a school. And we've decided on what we, as a board, seem to think is the best way to move forward, to, to assist the school in being better, to, to allow us to better serve our students, to improve our spaces, to make the school safer, to address flooding issues, without overdoing it, because there were things that the public said we shouldn't do. And those items have been removed from the list of things that we're doing. We've adjusted the price accordingly. We're doing everything in our due diligence to make this as least painful as possible to our taxpayers. There's been hours and hours of discussion and research and, and consideration made to what we're about to pass now. So anybody who may just be watching tonight for the first time, this is just the end of part one. Because once we pass this, if it should pass, we start part two, and that's the campaigning, and then part three, the final act, is the construction. So there's still a long road ahead of us. But there's been a ton of research and, and consideration and dialogue from, everyone in the districts had the opportunity. And for everyone who participated, I wanna say thank you personally, because this is a huge decision. But it's the right decision, and it's a long overdue decision. And I'm not throwing that at anybody in the past, it's not an easy undertaking, but we can't delay this any further. This needs to be addressed. Questions, comments, concern, call James.
Would any, would every board member like, like to make a comment, since we've gone through this, maybe just one, just a limited comment, just to say the process and all that, that might help the, the general public and the community to hear from us? Would that be a good idea?
If they want.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Did Carrie, well, did Carrie have something that he wanted to add? I thought you were about to say something.
He was, John was pretty thorough in all the items that has taken place up through now, as far as the necessity and discussions held throughout the high school and the district and the community that led up to this decision.
Yeah, and I would, I would encourage if, if the public's listening and just caught this at the tail end of it, to, to go through the different meetings that are online and, and really do research on this. I, I think I can say personally that I'm really proud of this board for going through this process, doing the due diligence, you know, considering that we are ourselves, community members, members, that are going to also see these, these tax rates. I, I think I can speak for us when we, we say that this is an investment towards the community, and, you know, we didn't do it lightly, and we'll still have to vote on this this evening as well, as well as look ahead towards the vote in the legislation process, right? So. Anything else, you guys? Okay, without further ado, then, let's go ahead and get that motion again, and then a second, if it's, it's okay. We don't, we don't have to, okay. Then we'll just do roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jallowig?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes. Then we, we have the vote passed.
Mr. President, just wanted to comment on how happy and passionately we are grateful to the board. Just real quickly, our kids deserve this, our future kids deserve this, the city of Wooddale and Bensonville deserve this. We're gonna move in the right direction, and you will see the payoff for our new facilities in the near future. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you for approving this motion.
And I do wanna emphasize that, you know, this is just the start, right? We, you know, that there will be a lot more time and community involvement, for them to come in and see what is gonna be done, and so.
Absolutely, there's a educational campaign.
And certainly encourage anyone that has any questions to come in and take a tour of the building, speak with James if they have any questions. You can also come and speak to any, any of us. But certainly come and take a look at the building, take a tour of the building, so that you can see exactly what needs to be done.
Okay, great, let's go through Certified Staffing Plan, the Certified Staffing Plan of 2022 and 2023. James?
Sure. Real quickly, next slide, the staffing plan is here, has been revised by a slight point two margin, the attachment that you received in the packet had 111.1, it should be 111.3. We added an extra section. But let me just go for you, we got a couple new members here, board members here, but just wanted to explain, what is a staffing plan? Next slide, and its purpose. The staffing plan is the total number of certified staff members needed for a school year to teach and provide student services. It's basically saying, hey, look, board, this is the number of teachers we need for next year to make sure all of our students are educated. Number two, why do we need a staffing plan? The staffing plan is needed to ensure course and student service positions are covered for the students who are placing the courses for their academic year. It reflects on number one, these are the individuals we need to make sure we have a very effective school year next year. And how does it affect our students? The staffing plan is, is the plan of all courses students take in the coming school year. How does, how do we create staffing plan? This is a couple months' worth of work. It starts in December, where all the students select the courses they would like for the next year, that's step one. Step two, January and February, our counselors meet with individual students to make sure they have the courses they need to graduate and to consult them as well. By February, their division leaders and principal meet to discuss the number of requests, course enrollment trends, and numbers of section needed for the school year. This is when we kinda find toothed it, hey, look, this class only has two, two, two students, we're probably not gonna run this class, and so forth. Number four, in February and March, Principal Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and the creator of, and creator of the master schedule, meet to finalize the building-wide tentative staffing plan. So we take these hundreds of course selection and put it in a plan in periods one, periods two, periods three, and so forth, it's quite complicated. And lastly, in March, we bring this plan to you for approval, and that's what we're doing this evening. So we take a look at this again, it's the right-hand corner, bottom number, 111.3, that's the number of individuals we would need here, we call it FTE, Full Time Equivalent. Just looking at the trend from last year, we're down two individuals there, and that's because our, and that specifically, our special ed numbers are down. But we're pretty much averaging about 111, 112, 10, 1/10ths in regards to the numbers of FTE. I'll stop there for any questions before we go to, for the recommendation to pass this motion.
Could you explain the decimal points, or 10.8?
Sure, I'm gonna turn that over.
Half a teacher or the quarter.
Yes, there you go. Jose, would you like to take that question? Why is there a point three there?
Sure, those are, so that each section, let's say you have a, an English class, you know, so it would be point one for first semester and point two for second, or point one for second semester, so altogether, it's a point two, if that makes sense. So altogether, it's a point two, if that makes sense. So a teacher, a regular teacher is teaches a 1.0 cause they're teaching five classes. They have two preps and then they have a lunch period. So that is a regular, uh, day for a teacher along with bicep time. So that's kind of how that's, that's, um, established. So we, we look at, you know, the, the size of the classes, um, what types of classes are being taught, and then determine how many teachers we need, uh, for each subject matter.
So a point three, maybe per student person?
Yes.
Is it a 1.0? Is it full time?
Correct. Right. And I, let's say you teach, you know, yeah, it, it's just, that's just the best way to describe it is it's like a section of a, of a, of a class. Yeah, point one.
Or perhaps someone teaches a little extra when we do the extra...
The overload.
The overload. That's so then it's, they might be a 1.2 for that semester.
That's not ideal though. Yeah, but yeah.
It's not ideal, but it is, it is a possibility.
Correct. Correct.
Uh, and I think, you know, it, it's good to point out that this is, this is driven by student interest.
Student interest as well as student enrollment.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, so it's driven by that. And then, um, if, if, let's say, a, a, a class or a curriculum is not offered this semester of their student interest, the following year, following semester, then we would fill, uh, that need as well?
Yes, depending on, yeah, we have an increase. Let's say a ton of kids decide to take one particular elective. Then that would change the number of sections for that elective.
Um, I, I, I'm a little concerned about the, the, this continued decrease in math teachers. Um, because math, math seems to be one of our, my strongest, um, strengths, one of our best strengths in this school. And I, I, I'm concerned that we're not providing what we need for students.
I, I think that, that's a good question. Um, math is very important, just like the rest of the classes. We are not underserving our student. It's really, uh, uh, the demand for that class, um, and the number of students per class. Um, and it's also, uh, Michelle, if you were, could you help me out on this one? The requirement for math is it's two or three years a requirement. It's what do students normally choose in regards to that?
Three-year requirement. They usually choose four.
Four. Okay.
Three-year requirement. They usually choose four.
Yeah.
And even the sciences, we're down.
Yeah.
I could, you know, I think, so we added 0.4 sections in math, um, kind of pandemic related. Uh, so the reality is we, we were kind of doing some smaller class size progression. But the way things looked at this year, we didn't necessarily have to do that again. So...
We did not.
Yeah. For this year, we gave you all this for, for math. It's, we're down 0.4.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying. Those, that 0.4 was added and sort of pandemic related. And so, um, when we did the section, we didn't have to do that 0.4 again.
So again, 0.4, we also last a whole, you know, one of our, you know?
Sure. But I'm just explaining the de- the decrease, um, in math for this year.
Right. I think there's a trend there as well. As you look at further left, there's a 10.2. That's our sweet spot, Patty. I think we put in some extra buffers, uh, um, the last couple of years. And also a, a factor that we all know, the enrollment is, is not a decline like this. It's, it's kind of like a slow decline. When I started here, it was like 1575. We're at the, at about 1475 right now. So we know that's happening. Once again, it's, it's, um, I just want to make sure the board understand, we are not taking classes away, right? If there is enough students requesting for that class, whether it's for science, for example, AP Biology or AP Psych, and we have that critical number, um, for that class, we run that class. We are not taking programs away. We, we've reiterated, even during the pandemic, we added programs and beefed it up. Uh, what we've done last year, especially with the learning loss of our students with that pandemic, we added more teachers and we added more programs as well.
Just as long as we're not relying heavily on the computer for mathematics, that's, and not teachers.
Instruction, yeah.
That's what I...
But it's hands-on instruction. There's some...
Correct.
Um, you know, just personally for me, I would, I would, I would like to see us be more of a STEM school. Um, but I, I realize that it, it's just student guided, I mean, student preference and interest that's driving this, right? So it's, every year, you've got a class of students that come in that, uh, demonstrate either a, an interest, a passion, or, uh, you know, an aptitude for something. That's what they drive, is kind of going through these. And that's where we fill in where the instruction has to be. So...
The other thing that happened, the other thing that happened in math is we, we, uh, somewhat detract in our general classes. So before, there was always, um, this general course. And then there was like a re-, not a remedial, but a course where students who performed lower were tracked into these lower courses. And we detract that, and all students enter into our Math 1, Math 2, so we're not, um, denying anybody opportunity to that grade level instruction. Um, it wasn't necessarily off-grade level, but it would take some students two years to get through an algebra curriculum instead of one. Um, so we, we did a little work on that, which when you collapse certain amount of sections like that, you, um, you kind, the, the, the need for as many sections reduces. Um, the type of pedagogy we use doesn't dictate the amount of students we put into a classroom. And that's how we determine how many sections are needed. So I just want to be clear, that has nothing to do with whether they're on the computer or whether, you know, they're taught directly. But our students have moved to a pedagogy that's problem-based in nature. So that's more of that STEM. I'm not just learning a skill and over and over repeating that skill. I am actually applying that skill in real-world situations. So I just wanted to kind of clarify some of those questions and comments on that end.
You say everybody answers in the same math level or...
Unless it's accelerated. We just, we took away that, that lower track. Yeah.
What's student services? Like, what are those classes? What is student services?
Student services is counselors, uh, psych, social worker.
Oh, okay.
So would it, is it, is it a, is it a correct explanation at all that even if we see a reduction in instruction level, that it could be due to instruction efficiency at all? Where, you know, maybe we have more tools than before that helps us teach better? Is that a, a fair statement at all or?
It can be hands-on. It can be hands-on, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, our students are collaborating together. They're solving problems together. They're working with their teachers on solving these problems. They're also filling in and establishing, um, or remediating skill deficits, which we've seen plenty of after the pandemic and in a more individualized digital manner. So you're seeing a combination of both. Um, but we definitely are leaning into problem-solving and problem-based mathematical instruction. But we, we have to have tools that allow us to remediate the gaps and meet students where they're at. And you can't always expect a teacher sitting in front of 27 teacher to individual, or 27 students to individualize. We're all 27 students. You have to have some digital tools to help with that. So that's kind of where that piece comes into play.
Right. A little bit of efficiency and quality, correct?
Right. But it's still, it still doesn't have a direct impact on these numbers.
Okay.
We're not changing the amount of students that go into a classroom based on our pedagogy.
And, and just from my understanding, these are our teachers here in our building.
Yes.
Uh, looking ahead to 7.0, you know, this is an additional math class, but those are gonna be Elmhurst instructors, if I remember correctly. So that's another set of people teaching. And then everybody at TCD are getting instructors that are outside of Fenton, so they're not in our staffing plan. And I think that plays into the STEM side and the trade side as well. So we gotta remember that we have other resources that aren't directly ours. So the number might seem lower, but when you look at the big picture taking into Elmhurst next year and TCD, there's other avenues that we gotta remember we have by our other agreements.
Right. Absolutely. Just to point out too, let's, let's take a look at Family Consumer Science. Popular class, right? Popular class. Look where it was a couple of years ago at four, and it went to three. Now it's at 4.9. Kids want to take that class. A couple of years ago, if you look at English language learners with our influx of immigrants, it was at 6.8. We are at 9, nine at now. So we react to the trends. We react to enrollment. Um, but another good point there, John, TCD, we gotta take that in mind as well as NedSec and all the other programs. We have to service our students. The, I think the bottom line, uh, that I know this is numbers, a numbers game here, and if you treat it that way. But really behind the scene is providing the right services for our students.
Any other questions, you guys? Uh, so regarding the Certified Staffing Plan for 2022, 23, may I have a, uh, motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. In a second. Okay. Thank you. Roll call, please.
And I'm sorry, I, did you mention that it was a revised staffing plan?
Yeah, he read it.
I, I can read it again. Uh, may I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the revised staffing plan for 2022, 2023 as presented? Thank you, Mary.
And I'll still make the motion. Second.
Regal?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Jallwood?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rinzenski?
Yes.
Biggero?
Yes.
Tingpao Pong?
Yes, and motion passed. Uh, next we go to the resolution abating the Working Cash Fund. And Bruce?
That is me, yes. Um, you have a resolution before you tonight. Um, the primary purpose of the Working Cash Fund is, is to loan any fund for which taxes are levied monies when or if necessary and after formal approval by the Board of Education. So it's kind of your internal bank, if you will. Um, when the budget was adopted last September, um, we had planned for this transfer, um, abatement, I should say, partial abatement. Um, the, the Transportation Fund, we've struggled a little bit in that fund with, um, having, uh, adequate funds uh, to operate the fund without some additional support from other funds. Um, so we have, overall, our fund balance is strong. Uh, the Working Ca-, or the Transportation Fund, rather, is, is, has been a, a little bit light on reserves. So, uh, we have the Working Cash Fund to help support that fund um, as, as we're showing tonight. The, part of what's driving that is there's really two funding sources, um, which is not a surprise, but in this fund in particular, it's property taxes, which is about 78%, close to 80% of the revenues, which is consistent with what our funding sources are across the board. We also get state transportation aid, so about 20% of that is transportation from the state. That has not been consistent. It's been prorated. It's been reduced. Um, and that's been kind of hurting our need to operate that fund. Um, so when we levy, um, you know, we, we try to be thoughtful about, you know, where you're gonna levy the funds because if you levy higher in one fund, it impacts other funds. So you've got to kind of play a little bit of a balance act. I think what'll happen in the fall with the, um, levy being, uh, and the CPI as high as it is, we'll be able to levy higher in the Transportation Fund and hopefully support that fund stronger than it's been in the, in the past couple of years. Um, so anyhow, that's kind of a long-winded story for this resolution tonight, this partial abatement. Um, again, as, as I said, it's been budgeted, was budgeted when we passed the budget back in September. Um, and we're asking the board to act on that tonight, but I'll certainly answer any questions if that you may have.
No questions?
I remember you saying that that was a possibility back when we passed the...
Okay.
And that picture there is that, it's not the number of buses we have.
That's quite a fleet, yes.
We, we are one of the very few districts that do have a fleet.
That's true.
That's true.
Okay. So may I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution abating the Working Cash Fund as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Regal?
Yes.
Jallwood?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rinzenski?
Yes.
Biggero?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Tingpao Pong?
Yes, and a motion passed. And next, uh, order of business is Elmhurst University MOU. And that is Michelle, Ms. Popnick.
Of course. So we, we, we previewed this a little bit last month. Um, Elmhurst University wants a partner in Fenton, and we want to partner in Elmhurst University. We've been seeking out collegiate partners for a while now to help our students earn early college credit. So, um, this memorandum of understanding, um, is one that they call the Collegic Extension Program. And they offer it to a couple of other districts in our area, and they've found success with it. Um, they informed us about it. We learned about it. We talked directly with their dean. We talked directly with their professors. And, um, it looks like a very strong option for our students. Um, we call it dual enrollment. They call it Collegic Extension Program. But that dual enrollment, once again, was a professor from the college teaching the course and then getting, the students getting a credit through the college, them being a registered member of that college or a registered student of that college while still being a registered student of the high school. Whether we decide to issue credit is totally up to us. We learned with our experience with U of I, it might be better that we just leave that off of our transcripts for our students and let them take, um, their university credit with them wherever they decide to go after high school. It is a flat fee per course. Um, they do not want us to charge tuition per student like we did with the University of Illinois. They had a really hefty, um, tuition rate, um, for us. They want us to, um, come to an agreement. Um, it's $3,500 for the course for as many students who enroll. So if we have two, or if we have 20, or if we have 40, it's that flat fee of $3,500. The, um, scholarships for students that are incorporated into this agreement, agreement, if a student completes this course, whichever course it is, for right now, we're talking about Calculus III. Um, and then, then they decide to enroll as, um, a long-term student at Elmhurst, they will get $2,000 a year off of their tuition. Obviously, that's an incentive for them to help increase their enrollment. Um, uh, like I said, this will be for Calculus III during the 22, 23 school year, um, but they are definitely open to other courses in the future. Um, whether it's their freshman college algebra, freshman college English, um, which we have to work out. But for now, um, Calculus III fits our needs because right now, our numbers are fairly low. Um, over the next two years, we probably have about 15 to 20 students who are actually eligible to take that class. And whether they actually decide to enroll is another story. So for us to actually staff a class like that with our own people, it's not gonna make sense. Um, so this provides us an opportunity to let them continue with their math studies if they so wish in that direction.
Do we have any questions now? No?
Um, we have a couple. Um, we have probably a few more that can take it, but they've been waiting to see what we do with this. Um, so, uh, I, I think once, if you decide to approve this motion and we make the adjustment to our course catalog, um, our students will be reintroduced to this course and to see if they want to enroll. Yeah, mhm. That's right.
Is it in person or online?
So it's online. Um, but they have an instructor who actually zooms with the class. So there's a couple of different online formats. Um, the one we were using with U of I was like correspondence. They're doing the problems and there's a guide on the side. If they access them, this is more, there's a teacher actually getting on a Zoom with them.
So it's a synchronized?
Yeah, thank you. That's a good, that's a good term for it. Yeah. Mhm. That's the term. I have, we haven't used that asynchronous. Going back to our hybrid days. Yes, that's exactly it.
So that's scheduled, so is it like during the school day?
Yeah, we, we'll have to figure out how and where to schedule that, um, to ensure that the students have some space in their schedule to actually participate. Um, but we've done, we, we did that again with the, the class this year. So...
Would our kids be going with other college kids or just, uh...
Um, actually, in this scenario, the, they'd be going with other high school students from the surrounding area. Mhm.
Same program?
Same program. Mhm. There, there may or may not be college students in it cause I don't think they, uh, deny another student access. But, um, I, I, when, in our discussions with them, they were talking about us collaborating with 99 or 88 and, and, and using that model.
I have a math difficulty myself. I won't tell you how far I'm getting there.
Oh, no.
Um, is, is that, is counseling really something you can do online? I mean, I, was it better?
Listen, these are students that are going to some of our most selective colleges in the country, and they can do anything, I think. Um, but yes, um, when talking to the professor at Elmhurst, he... But yes, when talking to the professor at Elmhurst, he feels really confident that the students have found success in this model even before the pandemic. They were using an online format, so he feels confident that it works. And, yeah, I mean...
So there's probably some, you know, outside support as far as maybe, you know, office hours?
Yeah, they also ask us to provide some support on our end, so, you know, with our math lab and, you know, if we have any certified support interventionists, we will assign the students to get the extra support that they need also here at Fenton.
You know, as much as I hate to say this, as much as we're leery of the computer, this is all the kids know. They're more comfortable with it than we'll ever be, as aggravating as that is.
I'll say this, Patty, having taken Calc I, II, and III, II is much harder, much harder, but yeah, I wouldn't know if I could have taken Calc III online, but to John's point, it's a different interface that I was probably not used to until now, so we'll see, we'll see.
There's a lot more tools that are used by teachers who are instructing online. We just had a training for some folks on project-based learning, and they got an email, here are all the different tools we will use during this online training, and there were eight of them. So it wasn't just Zoom, it was this tool and that tool, and how to chat with one another. It was, it's amazing.
I've taken all three, there was no internet when I took it, so I can't really speak to how.
Can't speak to it.
Yeah, well, well, and...
Well, this sounds like a way better option than what we got from U of I for way less money.
Yeah, yeah.
Do the credits, let's say they go through, do the credits roll over, do they pass over to another college, or they decided to change?
Yeah, so what they get at the end of this is a university transcript that says they've completed this course. And that can transfer to any other university they may decide to go to.
A D gets full credit?
A D gets full credit. A D gets full credit.
That's passing a class.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we satisfied? So as far as the Elmhurst University MOU, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the Fenton High School District 100 and Elmhurst University Institutional Partnership Collegiate Extension Program Memorandum of Understanding.
Second.
Thank you, Patty, thank you, Sylvia. May I have a roll call, please?
Oh, yes. We were talking about calc, so. I was going to take a pass. Yes.
Yes.
Renzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jahlou?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes, and motion passed unanimously. Next is our Course Catalog Amendment due Elmhurst University MOU.
Okay, so this is the follow-up to ensure that our students understand what's being offered to them, so, and our course catalog will revise our Calculus III course description. It will indicate that it's an online course taught by an Elmhurst University professor. It talks about how you must earn a D or a better to earn the credit, and the prerequisite of a B or better in AP Calc BC, which is a little bit different also than the prerequisite for U of I, they had to earn a four or a five on the actual AP exam. This is actually what they earn in their performance during the class. So I'm proposing a motion that we accept those, that amendment in the course catalog so we can advertise it accurately to students.
Comments, questions, otherwise we'll speed this along? Okay, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the proposed amendment to the 2022-2023 Fenton High School Course Catalog as presented?
Some motion.
Thank you, Carrie, thank you, Patty. Roll call, please?
Regal?
Yes.
Renzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jahlou?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes, motion passed. We go through the 2022-2023 NetSec Classroom Lease Agreement. That would be James.
Perfect, and that is actual picture of our NetSec classroom. So, oh, and I had my notes here. Real quick, this is an annual lease agreement with NetSec, which stands for North Dupage Special Educational Cooperative. We lease one classroom to NetSec for fifteen thousand per year. This program is currently servicing ten Fenton students. The program is called Academic Life Skills Program, and it serves students who are eligible for special education and require an educational environment with intensive programming. The program provides individualized intervention to support students across academics, communication, motor, social, behavioral, daily living skills, and pre-vocational and employment domains. The focus is to nurture, is on nurturing the growth of the whole child by fostering independence throughout their learning process. The staff in this program are NetSec employees, not Fenton. We are very happy with this program here at Fenton and the services NetSec is providing. We recommend that the Board of Education renews the NetSec Classroom Lease Agreement because it's very useful, not just for the students, but for their families who need the service.
Do you want to remind the public again what NetSec stands for?
Sure, it stands for North Dupage, I wrote it down, North Dupage, I wrote it down, didn't I? Here, it says, North Dupage Special Education Cooperative.
Cooperative, okay. And this ties it to our student services, right?
This ties to our student services, one of the programs. Per year to use that classroom.
Okay. Then we will take a vote, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the NetSec Lease Agreement as presented?
I'll make, I'll second.
Thank you, Patty, thank you, John.
Regal?
Roll call, please, yeah.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jahlou?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Renzinski?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes, and motion passed. Notice of Non-Renewals and Dismissals, Honorable Dismissals, Jose.
Yeah, so we have a few staff members that will be dismissed primarily due to sectioning, reduction of sections for next school year.
I'm sorry, you said due to what?
Reduction of sections, the number of sections that we just, that conversation made earlier about the number of staff.
Okay, no questions then. May I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the Resolutions and Notices of Non-Renewal and Dismissal, Honorable Dismissal as presented?
And these are honorable dismissals, this isn't on them, this is just because we restructured, so no penalty on them when they reapply somewhere?
For the most part.
Okay.
For the most part, yeah.
Do you want to go back to questions again? Let's go over that real quick, so...
We have some non-honorable, I didn't catch that.
There's two, there's honorable dismissal and there's a dismissal as well.
Just a straight dismissal.
Yes, sir.
I know we don't want to get into a public, I just want, I missed that, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, so may I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the Resolutions and Notices of Non-Renewal and Dismissal, Honorable Dismissal as presented?
I got it, thank you.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Juliette and John, can you get a roll call?
Regal?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jahlou?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Renzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes, motion passed. Next is Certified Summer School MOU. Jose.
Yes, this is one of the things we discussed at our last meeting, we were trying to clarify language in the contract for staff when it comes to summer school, who would be chosen, who would be selected to teach. Specifically, so if you look, if you go to the next slide, please, we have the original contract language that had three different, you know, points of who would get chosen, and if you look at the new language, the next slide, please, we have two sections, we have an A and a B. The A would be for a regular class, like a math, English, science, history class. The B would be for credit recovery specifically, because pretty much anybody with a teaching certification can teach credit recovery. But we want to make sure that everyone is aware, there's clarity, there's no confusion as to who should be, you know, teaching the class, or who would, you know, why they're being chosen to teach the class. So we're hoping that going forward for future teachers and future administrators, this is very clear in the language in the contract in terms of who's chosen and why.
So if the higher teachers from previous summers get first, if they want associates, right?
Yes. Right, so we try to reward people that have been doing it, yes.
Yeah, so based on seniority, pretty much, okay. Okay? No further questions, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the Certified Summer School MOU as presented?
Some motion.
Second.
Yep, thank you, Carrie and Sylvia, can you get a roll call?
Regal?
Yes.
Jahlou?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Renzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes, motion passed, and that's all the voting items. Let's get to informationals, James?
Fantastic, the next four items there, the Amendment Budget 2021, the Chromebook Purchase, the Summer School Curriculum Hours, the Extended Employment are all FYIs that will be voted on next board meeting, so this is a chance for you to reflect on it as the different presenters present on this item. Then the following, the Bell Schedule Exploration, this is exactly what it is, we're just exploring, it's in its neophyte stage, Michelle's going to talk about that a little bit later, and the COVID update. So with that, let's go to the informational item, these, once again, are FYI, so you have some background knowledge, so you have that information when you vote on it next board meeting. First one is Amendment Budget, and that's Bruce.
And that, we're recommending that the amended budget be brought forward, and we'll present it to the Board at the April Board Meeting, and that's for this year. We normally try not to do this, but because it's been kind of an odd year, I guess, with grants and ESSER grants and title grants and with the changes, our food service program, our corporate personal property replacement taxes are trending far higher, so we want to align that better with how we're tracking. We still expect to have a balanced budget, but this would allow us the opportunity to track it more to what our, how the activity is occurring throughout the year. So the process is the same as adopting the original budget, you know, you have to, you know, act on the budget initially, in this case, the amended budget. It goes on display, you have thirty days notification, you have a hearing, and we anticipate acting on that in June, then to act on the, and approve the, have the hearing that evening and the adoption of the budget, the amended budget at that board meeting in June, so.
So it's primarily about the food service?
Food service, the grants, ESSER grants, and the title grants, and some revenue issues as well with the corporate personal property replacement taxes, which are trending far higher, which is great, but far greater than we had expected. So the state's been fairly generous this year with the, those taxes and how they're coming in.
What a nice change.
So there's a question of where we need to spend the money?
Pardon me? Well, where we're going to spend it, yeah, it'll just align better with how we're tracking, I think, the budget.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Jim? Chromebook purchase, exciting.
Good evening, it's that time of year again. For the last, this will be the third year that we've done this, either March or April, our Chromebook purchases. For those that are newer to the Board, this is, we purchase a Chromebook for each of the freshman students as they come into Fenton. These Chromebooks are good for about four years, so that works out well for us, and they carry them throughout their time here at Fenton. This year, just as a forewarning, we're going to bring this to you in April. These are funded partially with local monies out of my budget and partially out of the Title One funding through Michelle's grant funding. This year, it's going to be a little different, as you can imagine, prices are increasing, and this is really the first time that we've seen any substantial increase since I've been here, we've really only gone up maybe a dollar or so per Chromebook a year. This year, we're estimating it's going to be about a twenty-five percent increase as a substantial amount of money. So we feel we're going to be able to handle that within the budget and within Title One funding that we have available to us. So I'm not concerned about it from a budget perspective, I just wanted to bring this to your attention before any sticker shot next month, just to let you know. It's a combination, you know, there's a lot of chip shortages across the board. What I'm doing, and why, I originally thought to bring this in March, what I'm doing is some additional diligence, just to make sure that there's no other option for us that will give us the same quality Chromebook without, you know, allows to get something at a lower price than what we're being quoted. What we typically do is we get some quotes, but we've been purchasing this through, purchasing co-op, a contract, if you will, that's been created through, approved, that supplies a lot of product to school districts around the country. And so we're really comfortable with that, but just because of this, I'm doing a little extra diligence, just to make sure that we're getting the right ones for the right price. So we'll bring that to you in April, and, you know, look forward to planning that.
Does the company take any, like, trade backs or from the ones that we, you know, and give you some kind of credit for?
That's an interesting question, so what we've done with the Chromebooks is a couple things. One is in the last couple of years, we've allowed the seniors to buy them products, basically, for a twenty-five dollar, a fairly low price, but at that point in time, that's about what the market value is for those. So they're able to keep that device that they're very comfortable with and take it on to college as a spare device. It'll still be a bunch of computer hardware. And then what we do with the rest of them, we hang on to a few for spares, because we'd like to have a stockpile so that the students' Chromebook rates, if we have to send it in for repair, they have one they can use at any time. All the remaining ones, we actually sell, so three or four months ago, you wrote it on a disposal list, it was super long, it contained hundreds and hundreds of Chromebooks, that was about two years of Chromebooks that we were disposing of. We're not, right now, they're sort of auditing that, at the place that we sold them to, we will be getting some money back, I don't know what that number is right now, I expect it to be, it could be anywhere from three to eight thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars for those, you know, five and six-year-old Chromebooks. So we do get some of that back, so that does help, and that goes back into, you know, this work.
Can you remind us again, what was that expenditure last year? The, was like?
What we spent last year was about a hundred and fifty, just shy of a hundred and fifty thousand. Another, just, I'll digress just for a few seconds here, when I ran to Fenton, we were actually leasing these, and so we changed this process where we would actually buy them for the freshmen, because we were actually spending more on leasing every year than what we were buying them for substantially.
But it's just a chunk out of front.
Yeah, so it was about a hundred and fifty, it's going to be closer to one ninety this year, but I'll have a more refined number next.
This is the alignment of the budget that we're, part of it is what we're talking about?
Yeah, yes.
Comes in, goes right out.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim, next one is Summer Curriculum Hours, and that's Papa Nicolau.
Yeah, sure. And I'll just clarify, sometimes this topic comes in April, sometimes it comes in May. We've done a little shifting sometimes of our board meeting, whether it's in the third week or the second week, and this topic really hinges on our master schedule being done and our teachers knowing what they're teaching for the following year, so it's looking like it'll be in May, proposal for these. Each year, Certified Staff proposes special curricular projects they would like to do over the summer, or sometimes we would like them to do over the summer. And this may be associated with new courses, which we saw a lot of new CTE courses in our programs of study, so you'll see some of that, major course revisions. If there's a new teacher of a course who's never taught that course before, we give them a little bit of time to prep with that material. If there's a new textbook, we give teachers time to associate themselves with the materials and the tools. So that is usually at a rate around twenty-five dollars an hour, next year it looks like twenty-six, thirty-nine per hour. So after the staff submits all of those, after knowing what they're going to teach, we go through that as a leadership team, and we approve or disapprove before we even bring it to you and ask you for, you know, for approval to allow teachers to work on those pro- to work on those projects and get paid. Alongside of that, we also do summer workshops, which is professional development. And that's also brought to you, kind of in that same package of the curriculum hours, at a rate of $20.90 per hour. We'll see some workshops over the summer aligned with personalized learning, grading, equity, things of that nature. We don't have every single one of those options pinned down now, but by May, we'll have some more details for you.
How many teachers usually?
We actually get a lot of teachers who participate because we actually ask them to participate as teams. We really don't want teachers working in silos on these projects. So if it's a project for English III, it's all of the English III teachers. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head.
And how many, about how many hours?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I'd have to go back and look really quick because I don't know it off the top of my head. But I've been looking at Bruce to see if he remembers because it's usually about 20,000, no?
I mean, it might be like six hours for one teacher.
Yeah, well, we have guidelines within it. So if like they're a new teacher of the course, we'll give them about 10 hours. If it's a new textbook, we'll give them about five hours. If they're designing a whole new course, we're looking at about 15 hours per teacher. So it really depends on how many projects are happening. But I think it's usually in total around 20 to 25,000 for all of these. The one year during the pandemic, it was much higher because everybody had to go online and make that shift. So don't quote me on it, but I'll have you, I'll have very detailed information for you. You'll see, I break it down by the department, the type of project it is, the hour, and the total for each project, and then the total. So I give you a pretty detailed account of everything.
Thanks, Michelle. Next informational item in regards to summer is extended employment. Sam?
Thank you. So for that safety, these are something that we look at every year in anticipation of the summer. So basically, we break it down into certain areas, CTE, it's a work day, career internship, kind of preparation. PLL, we have nine workdays for ESL coordinator. Obviously, removal is a big constituent for the start of the school year. That is critical. The counseling department, we did days two for credit checks. Basically, students transferring in, transferring out, they don't see the sectioning. So we do that. Then a group psychology, career counselor, which we have. Linker inventory, we do also over the summer. And then finally, the special department, we break it down by categories, like psychology, social worker, by four. Cooperative education, workplace experiences for students with IEPs. The nurse, special ed teacher, because we need to have them in the intake meetings, which we want kids to start by, start in the years we take the day to do intakes of new students. And then the nurse with her duties and the nurse assistant. So pretty critical, you are really not out of the ordinary.
And the theme between extended employment and curriculum summer hours is basically, if you want to think of it this way, it's preparation for the next school year. What work do we need to get done when the kids get back in the building? Administrators who are 12 months do not have these extended employment as part of our contract. If we work 12 months, we will also take a week to prep for what are the initiative, the strategic plan 2.0, to get that all going. So you start cleaning it up at the end of the year. That's exactly what we're doing right now. But you see in March and April, and it kicks off in May, hey, look, let's start preparing for the following school year. So this is what it's all about. The pictures there is the automotive, as Sam was saying, wood section. I mean, whether it's the saws there that needs lubricating and sharpening, as well as the lift machines there and the automotives, our folks need to do that. Our folks need to get it prepared and cleaned and maintained for the upcoming school year. Those are our pictures, yes. Who's truck? I think that's Leo's. Leo's is that your truck?
Is it a Toyota?
No, it's, oh, that one I don't know. Sam's that yours?
No.
Nice one. I gotta look.
Sylvia, I found your hours. If you want them, I can.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead and say.
Yeah. So last year was about 1,100 hours for a total of about $30,000.
Knew I could find it right away.
The next informational item is the bell schedule exploration. Michelle?
Oh, sure. So this is, like James said, just an exploration of the topic about how we organize our time during the school day. Right now, we organize our time with eight periods. Students go from one period to the next. We have a bison time on Tuesday through Friday. We have lunches in there. About the, in May, at the end of our remote learning, we sent out a survey to staff and families and students, just asking them, what were some of your key takeaways from your experience? And there was a lot of chatter in those comments about how we organize our time at school and how it best supports students in developing their learning. So we sat on that a little bit and really contemplated, you know, the effects of the pandemic and really, did that have, you know, how much merit is that, is there? And when you're in a crisis situation and understanding, you know, should we make a shift in our, our scheduling just because of that? So we went back and we had some conversations in February with our staff, now that we're kind of through that and back to normal. And we started having some lunch conversations with our staff about our daily schedule and how it's organized. And from there, it does seem that there are some valid points that our staff is making about our instructional time and how we use it, and how it might better in some ways support students if we look at different parts of our bell schedule or how we organize our school day. So from here, because there seems to be the need for more exploration, we are going to start a committee to look at this a little bit further. We're going to have our first three meetings in April and May. We're going to have them in the evenings. So students, parents, and staff can be involved. We're going to research some best practices around organizing the school day. We're going to look at some other school models. We're going to talk to some other schools who use different models and hear and understand their challenges and, you know, the strengths that they see. The areas that we are hearing about from our staff and our students, because we invited students to those conversations as well, was really, how do we allow time in our school day to allow for more community-based learning opportunities, times exploring careers, time exploring deeper types of learning experiences, maybe with community service or a service-based learning involved, you know, that's really hard to do in short periods of time. They're also talking about our systems of support and where our students get support, and whether Bison Time is the most effective, or are there other effective models for that? So that's what we're starting to talk about. We will see where these conversations go, and I'll update you in June and let you know where that, where those are going. I'm happy if any of you decide to join us, or if you have any interest, I can give you the dates and times. Like I said, we'll do it in the evening. So we can have our families involved.
Thanks, Michelle. One sec, go ahead, Patty.
No, thanks.
Just looking at it, what's nice about this whole process, as Michelle described, is we're getting it from all of our stakeholders. Key one are our students. Second is our teachers, admin, and now parents. So really looking forward to this. I think the committee is a smart next step to put some traction into it and to put some structure into this exploration. So more to come then, Michelle.
Did the pandemic survey reflect like what was going on in-house versus what was it more like their, how they felt about that e-learning?
It, it was the combination because we were in the hybrid at that point. So it was just overall how they felt about their learning at that point in time. So, you know, we had lots of comments about students, we love the higher level of independence and, and things of that nature. But a lot of staff and students and teachers, or I'm sorry, and parents, most of their comments had to do with how we organized the school day. So you can imagine, we were, we were experiencing that. We all remember that. But it's always worth a look to see if there's ways to do something better.
Thank you, Michelle. Our last informational item is just a quick COVID update. Great news here. We've had four cases in the last four weeks, as you can see by the chart there. Really, back in January, early January is our spike. It has tapered off. So we're very proud of that. That's the cases. Next one are masks. Masks is optional. As you can see here among us, there are some folks who want to wear masks and some folks who choose not to wear masks. That's the same thing in our school district as well. And lastly, testing. Testing is still optional. We used to test approximately 130 individuals every week. It's, it's still offered as optional, but we're averaging about 25, 30 at this present moment. So we're going to continue with that trend, that practice. There's still some cleaning, deep cleaning here every night at, at Fenton. That is it for informational reports?
Okay. Thank you, James. Next, we go to our consent agenda. Looking it over, do we have any questions or comments regarding our consent agenda? That's the usuals. We're good? Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Leo.
Go ahead.
Roll call, please.
Regal?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jallowitz?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes. Motion passed. Let's go through our committee reports, starting with the BCF, Bensonville Community Foundation.
Nothing to report. There is a meeting on the 24th.
Okay. DI committee, we have a meeting coming up next month before our, our regular board meeting. Board Finance Facilities Committee, we just had that. Don't need to ham-hash that, right? We're good?
Referendum passed. Our, we agreed to have the referendum.
Okay, I give up. Hey, I'm just thinking ahead, all right? These are positive thoughts.
Positive vibes.
I need more caffeine. I'm sorry. The referendum passed the board and is going on the ballot.
The resolution.
Resolution to approve the referendum. Yeah, I give up. Never mind.
John's gonna put the beat.
I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
I insert for the mouth.
To add to that? You're good?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Carrie. You got my back, man.
I got you back.
Yeah, thanks.
It's like seventh inning stretch or something right now.
That's what this is.
Len?
Len, real quick, there was a meeting on May 25th. I provided the Board with a report regarding the Len's meeting. In summary, there were 15 new bills in Springfield. So it hasn't been passed, so we'll keep an eye on it, and we'll see what happens. Next one is NetSec. There was a March meeting that took place on, on Monday. Topics is very similar to ours. It's, it included staff planning, honorable dismissal and dismissal, roof replacement at Lincoln Academy, policy revisions. We were way ahead of them. They're still getting through their policies. And classroom lease agreements.
Okay. And last is our Board Policy Committee. That's what, me and Patty, right? Nothing going on right now with that. No, is the updates. So we'll, we'll announce the next meeting. The next board meeting is Wednesday, April 20th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. And then, as we talked about, the board, bless you, Sam. Board DI committee meeting will take place prior to the regular March board meeting at 6:00 PM. Also, we have the ISB Spring DuPage Division Dinner Meeting, which is scheduled April 6, 2022, at 5:30. Looks like we're set to have everybody join that evening, right? Everybody can be so far in attendance.
It's a 5:30 meeting, so the O bus is leaving at 4:45, is that right? Mary, it takes to get to Downers Grove North.
Okay.
4:45, 4:30.
What happened to Jolliad? Isn't there, isn't there something down to Jolliad?
No, no. It was Downers Grove North. 4:45 should get us there. Thanks, Mary.
So now we're going to announce the closed session. So may I have a motion a second to go into closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body? Or legal, sorry. I was checking to see if we had anybody here. I could just tell them we're done, but we're good. We're good. Including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of the public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public if posted and held accord in accordance with the Act Law 5 Illinois CS 122C1 and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees of their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees reflective of the Illinois statute 5 Illinois CS 120 to C2. Again, may I have a, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you Juliette and Leo. Roll call, please.
Regal?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jallowitz?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes. Do you want to take a five?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and we are back in open session. And.
Hit it with a hammer.
May I have a motion a second to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
That would be Sylvia and Juliette.
Thank you.
Roll call, please. Mary?
Regal?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jallowitz?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yep.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes, and meeting adjourned. Thank you.
I really wanted to stay till 10. I'm sorry.
Congratulations, everyone. Get home safe.
Teach tomorrow.